Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council, scheduled for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018. I ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I am ever mindful that in the last ten days, Batavia has been struck by a number of people who have passed away, four of which I would like to specifically recognize in our invocation tonight for their good efforts on behalf of our community during their lifetimes with us. First is Bob Thomas, who was a community volunteer extraordinaire going back to the creation of the Batavia J.C.'s in the 1960s. He also was a most avid volunteer in the building of the Batavia Riverwalk and certainly was one who was always ready to step forward whenever Batavia called and wanted something done for the betterment of the community. Next is Dick Lavoy, who was a Batavia downtown businessman for over fifty years and whose time here was certainly, I think, a true blessing with his development of the Rio Pro Video Shop on Wilson Street, which has allowed for literally thousands of videos to be made of old family pictures and memorable movies from Batavia's past. And he really helped to create a legacy of historic documents second to none, so we want to remember with great fondness the work of Dick Lavoy. Next is Joe Stefano, who is a lifelong Batavian and whose family has been in the forefront of many activities in our community. Joe is fondly remembered for all the years when his children were in school, he was kind of the school cameraman. And I'm sure during his tenure with the camera, he probably took thousands of pictures of Batavia and specifically at schoolchildren during the 1950s and 1960s. And finally, we want to remember Bob Gerard, who passed away on December 22nd. Bob was the photojournalist with the Kane County Chronicle, and over the years, he has probably literally taken thousands of pictures of people, places, and events. And he always had a kind of artistic flair with his camera, so we have lost a lot of people in our community at this time that I want to remember tonight. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. And as always, we ask for guidance and direction and vision as we act on the various items of business before the city council tonight. We just ask for a blessing on all those we have just mentioned, and we ask for a special blessing upon our community in the year 2018, that we may continue to grow and prosper and do the right things that will make Batavia a grand place for families to live in the future. And we ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Rosado, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's ask that Kirk, the police caller, to roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Jansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
With the record reflected, all fourteen members of the city council are present and accounted for, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman, Atack, do you have anything?
I do not have anything this evening.
Anybody else? Okay, now for a nice opportunity, I've asked Police Chief Yule if he would come forward and introduce the two police officers who have completed their training and were about to swear in as members of the Batavia Police Department.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could call Officer Nick Burdette forward first. If you want to bring your family up.
Yes.
I think if you just stand in the middle of the semicircle there. Tell you a little bit about Officer Burdette. He joined the department in June of 2017. He is one of the first graduates of the first new 560-hour basic law enforcement training class at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy at the College of DuPage. Officer Burdette comes to us with previous work experience as a correctional officer, working previously for the Illinois Department of Corrections. He's a resident of the western suburbs, and he graduated from Lyle High School. He also obtained a bachelor's degree in law enforcement and criminal justice studies from Western Illinois University. He's currently nearing the completion of his field training and evaluation process, and he's currently assigned temporarily to the day shift.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Officer Nick Burdette.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
Having been appointed to the position of probationary police officer.
On June 21st, 2017.
On June 21st, 2017.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
The city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
If I could call Officer William Konowski to the front, and Will, if you want to bring your family up as well. Will's our most recently hired police officer. He joined the department in October of last year. He comes with four years of prior law enforcement experience, having worked previously for the normal Illinois Police Department. He was trained at the Illinois State Police Academy and graduated from there in 2013. He's also originally from the western suburban area and attended Niqua Valley High School. He also graduated from Illinois State, where he obtained a degree in criminal justice. Officer Konowski is also a commissioned officer, military police officer, in the Illinois Army National Guard, and he recently left us for a thirty-day deployment to Puerto Rico to aid in humanitarian assistance. He's also going through the field training process, and he's currently temporarily also assigned to the day shift.
Okay, Officer, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I state your name. I, William Konowski.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On October 9th, 2017.
On October 9th, 2017.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, moving to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approvals: December 29th, 2017, payroll in the amount of $797,517.92. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $912,867.11. And city council minutes for December 18th, 2017. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atack, Second Alderman McFadden, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack? Aye. Stark?
Aye.
Jansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, we have item number seven, or matters for the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wishes to address this this evening? You'd come forth and use the... Give us your name, please.
Thank you very much for listening to me speak this evening. My name is Joe Bertalmio. A little bit about myself, I moved to Batavia when I was in kindergarten. In April, I was very honored to have been elected to the Board of Trustees for Batavia Township. Not nervous in the least bit. I took my responsibility incredibly seriously, but I was also aware of the fact that on the Board of Trustees didn't necessarily mean that I was going to get my hands into too many things. I was, however, afforded an amazing opportunity this past November to go to the Township Officials of Illinois Conference, where I was able to attend many seminars, learn many great things, and really just working with the other members of our township. I felt like it was a great way to get my feet wet and to move forward with accomplishing more than just what the Board of Trustees is assigned to accomplish. One thing I want to say about this town is I grew up here, and I have loved it from every moment I've lived here. There's always going to be conflict and disagreements, but I... Every morning I wake up and I drive through these streets, I'm proud to be a bulldog. I've got a nearly two-year-old girl at home, and this past spring and summer, I was fortunate enough, my wife was working, so I got to stay at home, and pretty much every beautiful day that we had, I'd load her up in the stroller, I'd take her out, and what really struck me was, yeah, I've lived here for thirty years, so when someone I knew saw me, they'd smile and wave, and that was wonderful. But it was the strangers in this town. It was walking down the street and seeing someone doing some yard work, and they'd stop you and they'd talk to you. If I wore a Cubs hat, we'd talk about the Cubs. If they want to compliment my child, awesome. And really just reinforced the fact of how much I love the city of Batavia. But I have learned over the years that just because I want something to be the way I have it in my mind, does not necessarily mean that that's the way the reality of the situation is. I'm sure some of you are aware, I have spoken with a handful of people in this room about this topic in the past, I am sure some of you are aware that we do have some major issues with public health in Batavia. And I want to talk specifically about prescription drug and heroin abuse on our township and the city itself. I do not want to sound critical of my guys over at the township, because they are awesome, but it was an eye-opening experience in November. We got down to Springfield, we met for a bit, and we all discussed what seminars we were going to be attending. And I informed the gentlemen and the ladies that joined us that I would be attending three hours of seminars specifically aimed at prescription drug and heroin abuse prevention. And the overwhelming response I got from them was, why? And I don't fault them for that, I think it's just indicative of how there's not enough knowledge out there about this. Fortunately, one of the members of the township did join me for one of these seminars, and it was... It was good that he was there, because it helped that he learned, but it was also very depressing what we did learn that day. And the speaker got up, made a wonderful presentation, and at some point in time, she put up a map of the state of Illinois, and that map showed the hotspots of overdose deaths per capita. And there were three hotspots in Illinois: furthest south, furthest north, and then us. I mean, us and the surrounding areas. But the gentleman from the township who joined me, just his jaw fell open, he turned to me, he says, "I had no idea." And I said, "That is the problem." So I took that knowledge that I gained, and I brought it back home, and I spoke with Chief Yule, two members of the council, Mayor Schalki, I spoke with two members of the school board, and we came up with some ideas of how to move forward in not only prevention, but also awareness. And fortunately, the feedback I got was positive, it was very good, and I was able to put a plan in place that I presented to Superintendent Dr. Hitchens. I spoke with her about introducing something called naloxone into the schools. Now, what naloxone does is if you are suffering from an overdose, it reverses that effect. There's no liability involved, so that if you administer it to somebody who's not actually overdosing, it can't harm them, and if that person should still pass away because of the good Samaritan laws in Illinois, the person who administered naloxone cannot be held at fault. Upon speaking with Dr. Hitchens, she just did the best job I could have ever asked. Probably just two meetings, email, correspondences, one quick sit-down meeting, and she made it happen. So while I have the microphone and since we're listening, I just want to really call out Dr. Hitchens for doing just an amazing job in recognizing the urgency and doing it in a very efficient manner. But that was really only one small step in what I'm hoping to accomplish here. Some of the things I learned are specifically aimed at small communities like ours and how we can make changes. So I started looking at what I've done basically my entire adult life. That was mostly carpet cleaning, but it was also fundraising. I can remember writing my first check to the American Cancer Society when I was in middle school. I take a great deal of pride in what I've accomplished, but more specifically, the fact that I've done it all in a grassroots manner. My most recent fundraiser that I did, there was zero cost to execute, and it ended up raising $3,000 for children with disabilities. But every event I have ever put together has reeked, I should not say reeked, it has been very noticeable that it was an event produced by one person. And while I'm happy with the results I have achieved, I have also learned a great deal in my short time on the township, that I can accomplish a good deal on my own, but we can do a lot more if we work together. It is with that in mind, I'm asking really just for feedback, and if your feedback is to tell me you're on your own, I will still make this happen. If your feedback is, we're all on board, great, then we can make it happen together. I am concerned that the awareness is not there, and that we need to put it out there. This is a disease that we try not to talk about, because it's got a stigma around it, and really one of the most important ways to bring this to the forefront is to put it right in front of the public eye. So what I am hoping to do is create an event. It can be a fundraiser, but I think more importantly, it's an event that is fun, safe, entertaining for families, and also educational. Because I know in a few months, children will be graduating from high school, they'll be going off to college, they will be seeing a lot of these things that we're talking about right now for the first time. But I also know, some of them will not be seeing it for the first time. Speaking candidly and without getting into it too much, I can count on two hands the number of people my circle of friends lost just last year alone to this disease. And it is prevalent in Batavia, and unfortunately, it's not going to get any better. Now, Chief Yule, I commend you on the communications that we had. I know we recently discussed how you're adding more law enforcement to address this, and that is amazing, because law enforcement is one of your first lines of defense, but it also needs to be in the schools, it needs to be out in the public. So I'm going to hand out some information that I have here. This is just my contact information. I feel as though we have some of the best minds in Batavia in this room, and if I can get any feedback from you at all, that is better than zero feedback in the least of it. But before I hand this out and before I sit back down, I want to remind us that we do have some of the best minds in Batavia in this room, but we have some of the best minds in Batavia right outside that door, in our local businesses, in our schools, in our private citizens. And it is not only important symbolically that we all work together to show the children that we do need to work together, it's important because it does take a village, or a township, or a city. If we're going to tackle this problem in the most effective way, it needs to be a multi-pronged approach with everyone all in. So I thank you for your time. I'm going to hand this out very briefly, and have a great night.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your leadership in this whole thing. You have chatted several times now about this, and I appreciate what you're doing. I took great note just the other week that the Kane County State's Attorney, Mr. McMahon, and the Kane County Board Chairman had Kane County enter into the lawsuit that's being filed now by a number of the municipalities or counties about the opioid prescription drug crisis in the region and taking action against some of the drug companies. And so I'm thinking that that's a major step in the right direction, and we'll certainly want to continue to have this conversation with you, because we, as you've said, we have been struck by this very tragically in Batavia. I'm aware of at least three instances myself of people that I knew that had families that this came into. So this is not something that's happening someplace else, it's happening right in our own town here, and it's something that we really need to get a hold of. And I encourage Joe to chat with the school superintendent, because I think that should be our first line of defense in getting this out to the kids in the schools, that they understand what's really happening with this whole situation. So to be continued. Somebody else wish to address this?
Bob McQuillan, resident of Batavia. First of all, I'd like to wish a Happy New Year to the mayor, the city council, city staff, and also I'll throw the residents of Batavia in there for good measure, too. I have two procedural questions that I'd like to ask tonight, and I don't necessarily expect an answer tonight, but I think an answer should be forthcoming soon. And they're about the eagerly awaited February 5th meeting on the Campana Project. And the first one is, will Evergreen Realty provide the council and also the public the proposed changes so that the city attorney can determine if they are minor or major changes prior to that February 5th meeting? So that's the first question. And the second one is, since there is a protest in place, I'm assuming that that protest will always be in place until a vote is taken on the Campana Project, and does not have to be refiled with each potential vote being placed and being placed on the agenda. I just wanted to know if that was correct or not.
Well, thank you.
And again, not expecting an answer this evening.
Thank you for your questions. Certainly, we'll get the answers to you. I know that from some of the discussion with the staff, that some of what you've just mentioned is already kind of in the works as far as researching the legalities of it all, and we'll be able to give you a written statement about where all this is going, so.
Super. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Somebody? Oh.
Scott, can you provide the answer first?
Yeah, as for the first one, it depends on what Campana actually proposes. If they are proposing substantive changes, the council may not be able to take action on it that evening because of the substantive nature of what those changes may be. We don't know yet, that we have not received any revised plans or anything like that to date. So it'll depend on, you know, what happens by the February 5th meeting. The second one is, as long as they are not withdrawing their application and filing a new application, the objection would still be in place. If they file a new application for a new zoning action and something that's altered from what it is, then at that point, they may need to file a new protest, if that's what that property owner wishes to do. But as long as the current application is in place, that will still apply.
Okay. All right. Item number eight, we have a presentation. Senator McConaughey, State Senator McConaughey contacted me and said that she was in the process of having a document presented to the Illinois General Assembly honoring Phil Elstrom and his time with us, so we have a member of her staff, and you want to come up and meet me there? Why don't you introduce yourselves, so everybody knows who you are?
Hello, good evening. Thank you, guys, for having me. My name is Leah Negron, and I am State Senator Karen McConaughey's legislative assistant. A little bit about what I do, I travel back and forth with the senator to and from Springfield, and I track her legislation. When I'm not in Springfield with her, I'm in her district office, which is located in West Dundee, and I do some of her correspondence, some of her constituent cases. So if any of you need anything from our office, I'll be leaving copies of my card and some newsletters from spring session as to what the General Assembly was up to. I'm sure most of you know. Senator McConaughey doesn't have much of Batavia, but the part that she does have, anyone who needs anything from our office, feel free, even if you're not in her district, to contact us, and thank you again for having me.
Would you like to read this?
Yeah, I can read this. So Senator McConaughey, in honor of Phil Elstrom, decided to do a death resolution, and she couldn't be here tonight to present it, so she asked me to come. She's been trying to make it, but we're going to be back in spring session shortly, so I'm just going to go ahead and read the death resolution in honor of him. Offered by State Senator Karen McConaughey and Senator Jay Colleton, President of the Senate, and Senator Althoff, Anderson, Aquino, Barrickman, Bennett, Bartino, Tarratt, Biss, Bivens, Brady, Bush, Castro, Claiborne, Collins, Connolly, T. Colleton, Cunningham, Fowler, Hane, Harmon, Harris, Hastings, Holmes, Hunter, Hutchinson, Jones, Kohler, Landec, Lightford, Link, Menard, Martinez, McCann, McCarter, McConkey, McGuire, Morrison, Mulrow, Munoz, Murphy, Naibo, Oberweis, Redonio, Raul, Resin, Ryder, Rooney, Rose, Sandoval, Shimpf, Silverstein, Stadleman, Staines, Severson, Tracy, Trotter, Van Pelt, and Weaver. Whereas the members of the Illinois Senate are saddened to learn of the death of Philip "Batter" Elstrom of Batavia, who passed away on May 28th, 2017, and whereas Philip Elstrom was born in Evanston to Philip R. Elstrom and Iris "Batter" Elstrom on July 14th, 1928, he attended high school in Wheaton and was a star football player at the University of Kentucky. And whereas Philip Elstrom opened Batter Publishing, a print shop at the corner of Main Street and Batavia Avenue, he also operated the first art gallery in Batavia where local artists could exhibit their works. And whereas in 1969, Philip Elstrom was elected Assistant Township Supervisor and became a member of the Kane County Board, he became chairman of the Kane County Board and held that position from 1971 to 1982. He then moved to the Forest Preserve Commission and was elected District President. He later worked for the National Association of Counties in Washington, D.C., where he was an advisor to President Ronald Reagan. And whereas Philip Elstrom was the vision and imagination to make things happen during his time in politics, he envisioned the bike trails instead of abandoned railroad tracks along the Fox River. He arranged to have the Fabian Parkway Bridge constructed when a new bridge over the Fox River was needed. He was also responsible for the development of Settlers Hill Golf Course and the acquisition of Kane County Government Center property. He was a first... He was the person most responsible for bringing minor league baseball to Kane County, and Elstrom Stadium was named in his honor. And whereas Philip Elstrom was reasonable for the beautification of South Batavia Avenue, when he planted trees and flowers along the avenue and personally took the responsibility to water the trees and flowers, he also worked on the restoration of many downtown buildings by creating the Batavia Downtowners, an organization set up by himself and other downtown business owners in the 1970s to bring new life to the business section of Batavia. He restored five of his own 19th-century buildings along River Street, including an old dairy where he lived on the upper floor. His apartment became a gathering place for his annual canoe race parties on his large deck above the Fox River. And whereas Philip Elstrom was named Citizen of the Year by the Batavia Chamber of Commerce in 1982, and in 1985 helped to fund a scholarship to benefit students and further their dreams of a college education. And whereas Philip Elstrom leaves a legacy benefiting everyone in Batavia and all of Kane County and will be greatly missed by many. And whereas Philip Elstrom was preceded in death by his parents, his brother-in-law Frank McGwain, and his niece Catherine McGwain Sheldon, his lifelong dear companion Peg Bond, and many close friends. And whereas Philip Elstrom is survived by his loving sister Catherine Margaret McGwain, his nephew Frank Sandy McGwain, his dear friends Kathy Usee, Cyril, Terry and Jan Bond, Josh Bond, all of whom were like family, his lifelong secretary and good friend Robette Kiesler, and his good friends Eldon Frydandel, and Mayor Jeffrey... I'm going to totally... Schalki, sorry. Therefore, be it resolved by the Senate of the 100th General Assembly of the State of Illinois that we mourn the passing of Philip "Batter" Elstrom and extend our sincere condolences to his family, friends, and all whom knew and loved him, and be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to the family of Philip Elstrom as an expression of our deepest sympathy, adopted by the Senate July 1st, 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate Senator McConaughey sending this down tonight. I think it's most fitting that it be presented here, because he kind of considered Batavia and its government kind of part of his family, and he was one that felt very strongly about stuff. But what I want to share is just kind of a story that happened in the last few weeks before Phil passed away. It's ironic that this comes from Senator McConaughey, because at the end of the day, I think Phil Elstrom took the credit for stirring up the political juices of Senator McConaughey and getting her into elective office. And she originally was quite an opponent of Phil's. They did not see eye to eye on some stuff, and Phil and her... They did not see eye to eye on some stuff, and Phil and her went swords-tooth against each other for quite a while. And then, as things eventually emerged and changed, Phil used to tell me that he liked what he was seeing that she was doing in the Senate, and so that he appreciated that she had kind of quote-unquote "come around," in his view, on some of the things that happened. And he was patting himself on the back that he kind of took some of the credit, that she was really a strong political talent lane and kind of non-action, but he got her stirred up and got her going, and from that, she became one of the leaders in the Illinois State Senate. So kind of through the back door, he took a lot of the credit for her success. But the last time the two of them met, I was present, and we were all up at the homestead where he was, he spent his last, latter days. Karen was kind enough to come down to the homestead one morning and have coffee with us. And so they kind of shared what I just talked about a little bit, about how it started out with such animosity and how they had done a 365 and become great political friends. And Phil says, "Karen, I just want to tell you that in the last election, I voted for you." And so I think all's well that ends well, but I think it's one of the classic political stories of King County, that two people who started out on so different of opinions on things and how through a period of time, they gradually came together. And as the proclamation so aptly puts it, Phil did a lot of wondrous things in the day. Probably the thing that he took the greatest heart in and the greatest pride in was work to try to improve the appearance and the use and the recreational abilities of the Fox River. And in Batavia, he donated a lot of his own personal money to buy property along the river, specifically over on South River Street. And he was a very big supporter of the idea that Batavia had one of the most beautiful stretches of the Fox River during its whole length, and that we should do everything we possibly could to try to enhance that. And while I'm not at liberty to say what it was, in his will, he has left a nice endowment to the Batavia community to continue forth with that Fox River work. And so we're very pleased to have you present this to us tonight. We'll enter this into the official record of the city council, so it'll be there for future generations to see. But this is kind of the end of a wondrous story of how two people who had such, I was there and listened to both of them, tell me what they thought of the other in the early days, and to see how it all kind of ended up in the end is a nice story. And so I'm very proud that Karen was able to do this. I thank her immensely and personally for what she did, and I think this was a real nice action of a story that ended up so good. So thank you for coming down.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Thank you. I think maybe it would be okay if we made a motion to accept this and place this on file with the council.
So move. Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf, for approval, accepting, and place on file the resolution from the State Senate. Kirk call the roll on that.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Okay, moving then to item number nine, which is ordinance 18-09, amended and restated RDA for One Washington Place. Who's got this one? Laura or?
We'll just turn it right over to Laura since she's up here.
Okay. So with this ordinance, staff is recommending approval of this ordinance to amend and restate the redevelopment agreement with One North Washington, LLC. The amendments that have been made to this document are to reflect the changes in the building's composition and the funding that were approved at the city council's prior meeting on December 4, 2017. And just a summary of what those changes to the composition of the building, they are as follows: That the number of parking spaces has changed from approximately 351 to 335. The area of commercial space has changed from approximately 14,350 to 5,664. And the number of residential units has changed from approximately 186 to approximately 194. And these changes were a result of the construction estimates being higher in 2017 than when originally estimated in 2015, primarily due to the substantial bedrock that needed to be removed in order to construct the parking, and also the challenges that the grade along Wilson Street presented to the feasibility of putting commercial spaces on the ground floor at that location. It was also agreed to at the last meeting that rather than a bond for $14 million and an additional $2 million to be paid from later increment, that the city would bond for $16 million initially with no additional reimbursement from later increment. I also wanted to point out that the agreement now includes the commitment of the developer to fund early bond payments in cash if increments and the SSA would be insufficient, as they are expected to be, until the increment generating part of the project is built in approximately years two and three. There are also updates to the language that reflect that certain obligations on behalf of both parties have already been met. Does anybody have any questions about the changes to the agreement specifically? Yes, Alderman Wolf?
The first thing I have is down on the commercial space. Because of the change of where it's located and the amount of square footage, it would not be built on top of the underground parking facility. So I don't think that needs to be in the language.
Okay.
That's in the last line that's on page seven on the front copy we had here.
I have the developer here, so I just wanted to make sure with him that the, that commercial space that is on the corner of State Street and North River Street, is that adjacent to the parking garage as opposed to being built on top of it?
Right, where if it would have been along Wilson Street, it would have been on top of it, or part of it would have been on top of it, and I think that's where the language came from. So that was one thing I saw it need to be changed. And then, just a clarification, because I've had a lot of questions in this side of the public.
Sure.
If, because the developer would pay that upfront on the lack of increment coming in because the parking garage gets built first, if the increment that comes in over the timeframe is not sufficient enough to pay off the bonds by the time the TIF is over, the developer would be required to come up with that as a payment beyond that, or they would institute the SSA to make that payment?
Right.
So that would not fall back on the general funds or on the city to have to try to make that up.
Roman, can you just confirm for the alderman that the SSA would remain in place to satisfy the bond payments?
Yeah, the SSA would remain in place to satisfy bond payments either as the project is being developed or at any point that's in place and that would...
Okay, because that was the one question that I had, that a lot of people have asked me, you know, if we issue bonds out of this, general obligation bonds, and they can't be paid back by the increment, the SSA or the developer would be required to make those payments to pay the bonds off.
Yeah, correct.
Alan, I want to piggyback on that one a little bit, too, because I did receive quite a few phone calls myself today, which I didn't have the opportunity to return any of them, but quite a few of them were, their concern was, and the reason why they left me the message that they wanted me to vote no on this, was because they were with the understanding that this development was going to raise the city's taxes and that they were going to be responsible for those taxes to be paid. And that is not true whatsoever. This developer is responsible for all this cost to be reimbursed through the TIF district, whether he do it through the EAV, whether he do it through the SSA, or write a check.
Right.
He's responsible for all this cost.
And whether this developer retains this throughout the time that the TIF is in place, doesn't matter. It's the property itself that funds the TIF and pays off the bond.
Correct.
And that's what I wanted to make sure got back out to the public again, because it seems like we've said it over and over and over, but I keep getting questions about it.
Right.
I think an important thing to add to that is the fact that it is an obligation on successive owners, too.
Right.
So Laura?
Yes.
Another question for you. We're talking about, you know, if the development isn't quite successful with the TIF funds, that we're going to bridge it with the SSA funds. But if the development is successful, and I know we talked about in excess of, say, $800,000, but if it's highly successful, which there's that potential, okay, the developer is only going to get the $16 million upfront that we give him. There's no shared revenue with the developer, as it was proposed in the original RDA.
That's right.
But now he's just maxing out at the 16 mil.
At the 16 million.
And that is it. And so if it goes above and beyond, it's just a TIF district that benefits from it, and the residents of Batavia would benefit from it. Is that a true statement?
Yes, it is. And in fact, of that 16 million, remember, 12 million of that is the public parking garage. So there's really only an additional $4 million in reimbursable costs that would be associated with the private development. Alderman Chantet?
Procedural question. I'm just curious, is there a different taxation? Is there a more favorable reason why Shodine would want to write us a check as opposed to allowing it to go through normal channels for collecting the funds for the first couple of years?
The first couple of years, the SSA, there's only, we can assess $10 on $100 of value, and so because there's that limit, and there is going to be very little to none, potentially none, no increase in increment during the first one year to 18 months of construction because it's a public structure and off the tax rolls, then that's a cash backstop that they are making to cover our bond payments.
We wouldn't be able to collect if it weren't for them to write us a check.
That is correct. Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Laura, can you tell me, has staff's position on this changed at all? Is staff still in support of this project?
Staff is still in support of this project. However, I would note that from the community development perspective, that it would be preferable for them to see that commercial on Wilson Street as being a matter that is consistent with our comprehensive plan, and so they would have preferred that. But this was a case where the economic development, the goals of economic development, which are also part of our comprehensive plan, were in conflict with other elements of the comprehensive plan. So at the end of the day, our recommendation is that because of the other advantages of this project outweigh that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor? Alderman Brown?
Not that this has anything to do with the passage of this RDA that we have in front of us, but I think it is important to note that what we'd be voting on here tonight is just the RDA. That city staff and our city attorney's office have sat and discussed whether or not this would have to go back through the whole process, which would mean the Plan Commission, Historic Preservation Committee of the whole, and back to the city council for final approval of the plans as would be presented. And city staff and our council's office have determined that, yes, it would have to go back through the entire process. So even if we pass this tonight, the project isn't completely approved. It still has to go through all those other processes and still come back to the city council for final approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I guess it'd entertain a motion?
Well, we do have, Alan, you had a suggestion of removing some language?
Yes.
So we would need to know exactly where in the agreement that is so that the RDA could be approved as amended?
It is in, it's on the first page that was handed to us tonight, which is numbered seven at the bottom. It's in recitals, in D, letter D, and then 1B, commercial space, where it changes the numbers to 5,664 square feet built on top of the partially underground parking facility along River Street. I don't believe that's correct. I think it's adjacent to the parking facility along River Street.
Okay, so the motion would be to recommend approval of the ordinance 18-09 with the revision of page seven, item D, removal of the verbiage of "on top of the public parking garage," and then under item B of the same page, remove the same verbiage of "on top of the partially underground parking facility along River Street," correct? Would you agree with that motion?
I think it's, is it just a change to 1B?
I think it's just, it's just in 1B at the bottom of the page.
Everything after the word feet.
Just in 1B?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I make the motion that we approve ordinance 18-09 as amended.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman McFadden to approve the RDA as submitted and amended. Is that what we want to say?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Alderman Callahan?
I'm just going to say I'm not going to support it because of the very reason that we just described with the financial side being the, meeting the comprehensive side of the comp plan on this. I'm going to go with what the community development stated. For me, this is not where it's about money and what makes the most financial sense. It goes to the actual vision of what the town is, and for me, this is not the style that I think will fit that in the long run.
Alderman Stark?
And I will continue to support this project. Surprisingly enough, I had the opportunity to be in the Mill Creek Apartments over the Christmas holiday. A friend of mine, who is single and is in her 70s, rents an apartment there, a two-bedroom apartment, and Shodine makes an incredible product in terms of rental, and I was amazed at the quality of her apartment. I wanted to move in next door. It was so nice, and I think that this is a type of housing stack that Batavia needs. I exchanged emails today with someone in town who, when I pointed out that, you know, most of the surrounding communities are developing apartment complexes in their downtown for walkability, for the things that we've been really striving for in Batavia, they said, "Well, if you're comparing us to St. Charles, then you really don't know what you're talking about," which made me laugh because I, there are still many people in our area who look at us as the poor stepchild to our other sisters or surrounding communities. And it's not accurate anymore, and Batavia needs something that is more upscale and is someplace that people like me and other people who I've talked to would like to age in place in our community. So I will continue to support this vehemently. Thank you.
Alderman Bryan?
I've spoke to this before in the past, and I, too, am going to support it. I'm a proponent for this. I just think, some arguments I've been hearing is that, you know, we're losing retail. We don't have retail there presently. There's no retail. So we're not losing retail. We're giving some up, and it's a development by a developer, and things change. I mean, there's always negotiation going on. The original RDA, they thought was going to be successful, and, you know, costs, they didn't get their full cost. For that amount of money, I mean, it's a $50 million investment in our downtown, and that is huge, and that is for our downtown, and it's moving our downtown forward, and I can't, and I think if we build it, retail will come. Retail tax dollars will come. They will follow. And so I think it's upon all of us to support this. We've invested too much time and too much effort into this development to just let it go along the wayside now. So I will firmly be standing behind this.
Anybody else? Alderman Er.
As I've said in the past, I wasn't involved in all the discussions you had at the beginning. This was all supposed to be solved before I started. But, yeah, I struggled with it because I really did support that, what was going on And I think that was part of the whole vision, and I think with some more creativity, I still think it could have been done. And, you know, there are people from the public that said, "Hey, what about this?". And I get napkin drawings aren't, you know, aren't going to be the reality necessarily, but I do feel that there could have been some more creativity that we could have all gotten what we were looking for out of this. So, yeah, I'm going to continue to be a no on it.
Alderman?
Yeah, I've supported this in the past. I continue to support it. I think, yeah, I've heard a lot of argument about the loss of retail. And for me, this project was never about retail. Retail was a component of it. It's, still is a component of it. It's about supporting our comprehensive plan, which is to build, revitalize downtown. It's what the community's been asking for, for years, and so here we've got this, which is an engine that can provide that. And so does it provide retail, all the retail we would want in and of itself? Possibly not. It provides some, but more importantly, it provides the opportunity and the engine to fuel extended retail. I had a lot of conversations with people today, and heard a lot of phone calls from people today, some supporting the project, some not supporting the project. But the, you know, the overall impact of this for, for the city to, you know, a lot of people who didn't support it said, "I got this vision. I want to see River Street grow north." I said, "Really? Well, what's the engine for that going to be?" Well, the engine for that's going to be One Washington, and we've got this to power that. We own the property at Larson Becker. This makes that more valuable, makes it more enticing to develop. It makes the property across the street on Wilson more enticing and more exciting to develop. It makes other vacant properties downtown more exciting, more inviting. All these things are revitalizing our downtown, which is what people have been telling us for years we want. So I can live with the small loss of retail. And the other big gripe I heard about it was a lot of people just don't like Shodine, and for me, that's not a reason to not approve the project. You know, like, nah, but that's not a valid reason. It's a, I think it's a solid project. It provides a needed type of housing stock. I talked to one guy, he said, "You know, this will never go." I said, "Tell me, if you wanted to rent an upscale apartment in Batavia right now, where would you go?" "Probably to St. Charles." I would like to have those people in Batavia, and I'd like to give them some stock to support that, so I'm going to support this project.
Alderman Chancet?
And then to piggyback on that, this council had the opportunity to accept a dozen townhouses on this property. We made a valued judgment as a group that parking was very important for our downtown, and so we told the developer to give us more units. We told the developer to inflate the parking deck, and to lose sight of that would be breaking a promise, I think, that we made to the community. So I will continue to support this.
Anybody else?
I just kind of have a question, comment. I suspicion that as time goes on and this development is built out, if there is a strong demand for commercial, if the properties that are vacant now in Batavia, the retail properties and other commercial properties are filled with a little ingenuity, what the area that we're talking about losing as retail could be built that way again. I mean, I don't see why it just couldn't be built out. So if there's a strong demand, if that's the place where it's supposed to be, I think it will find its way there. That is my opinion, and I don't see why it wouldn't.
Anybody else? Just a story I got today. As you know, I've born and raised here, and have lived here all my life, so I know a lot of people, a lot of people who were here and left and went someplace else know me, so I'm Jeff, and they can call me back anytime they want. So I had an old friend of my mother call me today, and she lives out in Maryland, and she wanted to tell me that her family's still back in Batavia, and she's in need of moving back to Batavia, and she wanted to know where she could send a deposit to Mr. Shodine so she could be one of the first to buy his unit. And I said, "Well, I don't think you want to do that till the thing is approved and underway, and I find here what has just been shared by Alderman Brown, that this has still got to go through some hearings and whatever have you." So then she kind of scolded me about why is this taking so long, because she's in real need to find some housing, because her children, her grandchildren, and her great-grandchildren are in Batavia, and by God, she wants a decent place in this town to live, and she'd like to be right downtown so she could walk to McDonald's Coffee Shop and be in there in the morning, where all, some of her friends meet there every morning. So you never know what you're going to get, but, I mean, there is a lot of people out there that are looking forward to this type of product coming in here. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of the amended and restated RDA for One Washington Place. Kirk Colerole.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
No.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Weitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Ure?
No.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
It's a tie, 7-7.
I vote aye. Motion's approved. All right. Ollie, you got some good news from the Chamber of Commerce for us tonight to begin the year.
I don't know, I could like sing or dance or something, I don't know, but I'm not good at either of those. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you this evening on behalf of the Batavia Chamber. We have a few events coming up we want to talk to you about. Our Bataviaopoly games are in, so I want to chat with you about that. And we also have the owner, the new owners of Aliano's here to chat with you about what they've got going on across the street. So we have our next networking event on Wednesday, January 17th, from 5 till 7 p.m. at Bar Evolution. So everyone is welcome. It's a free and open networking event. We've just added on to it a little bit of a charitable cause over the past year, and so we asked people for a $10 donation, and we select a charity of the month, and this month, it's the Batavia United Way. So if you can join us on January 17th from 5 till 7 at Bar Evolution, there'll be some appetizers and a cash bar, so please join us. Then we have teamed up with the Valley Industrial Association and Wabansy Community College to put together some programming, educational programming for our members, our combined membership. And this year, we focused on HR. So we're going to be doing a full seminar series throughout 2018 on HR programming, and the first one is Thursday, January 25th. It's on record keeping and retention, and how long should I keep it? So please join us in partnership with Valley Industrial Association and Wabansy Community College to learn a little bit more about for your businesses, how to keep records and how long to keep them. Next, on January 25th, from 6 till 9 p.m., we have our annual Inspire Event. It's our annual awards ceremony. We give away many awards to local businesses, color Ole Awards for development, construction, redesign, and general investment in economic development in the community. So we have plenty and tons of those awards to give away this year, since there's been a lot of great things happening in our business community. And also, we will be giving away, you heard Phil Elfstrom was a past Citizen of the Year, and we are going to be adding to that list for the 2017 Citizen of the Year, Marcia Boyce from Boyce Body Works. She's done a lot, not only with her business, but also with Batavia United Way, Batavia Main Street, the Batavia Chamber, and many other local organizations. So we want to thank her for her commitment to our community. As I mentioned, our Bataviaopoly games have come in. They came in at the, right at the wire on the 20th of December, and we were able to hold two very nice events at Funway, and we gave away tons and tons, didn't give them away, to be honest, but were able to hand out to those that pre-ordered the games. We had sold over 400 in pre-order. We only made 750, and since then, we've sold another couple thousand dollars' worth of games. So we're at around 50 games available at this point, and I just sold two when I walked in the door today, thanks. But just so you have a visual of it, we're very proud. Thank you to Scott Salvati and his team at Lighthouse Marketing. They put together what I think even the company that created these all across the country is one of their proudest pieces. So you'll see there's a little bit of history and a welcome to Batavia on the back of it, all of the local partners and sponsors that we had, and it's just a really awesome game. We're hearing some great feedback from people that have picked up the game and were able to play it with their families over this holiday season. So we came in right under the wire, but if anyone is interested, please reach out to the Batavia Chamber. Our number is 630-879-7134. We'll try to get one of the last few games into your hands. We also have some additional sets of pewter pieces. We had a family come in today that, in their fierce competition this weekend, lost one of the playing pieces. So we're happy to hand those out. If anybody needs one, please let me know, and we're thinking sometime in the future we might do a little, where's the pieces around town? So also, we did partner with three local retailers, and we, they are selling the games as well. So if you can't make it into the chamber during our normal business hours, they're also available at Fawn Gifts, Kay Hollis Jewelers, and Batavia Floral. So for $25, you could have one of these beauties. We even have a few signed by the mayor, so, but those go to special people. Like me. Just kidding. So if there's nothing, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'd love to see all of you at our Inspire Event again on January 25th. We are hosting it again at the Nagel Emporium at Marmion's Abbey Farms. Please join us. We'd love to have you celebrate all of the commitment from our local businesses. Any questions for me before I introduce our...
Alderman Brown?
Yep.
I'm really not trying to win the award for buying the most games, but mark me down for two more.
All right.
When I stopped down, a little funny story, when I stopped down, a fun way to pick up the one that I had pre-ordered, Holly and a couple of the other gals were kind of joking about, you know, maybe you'll be back to get another one, who I no more than left there, and my brother who lives in Florida called me and said, "I heard about this Monopoly game. Can you get me one of those? Do you know anybody that you can get me one?". So we turned around, we went back and got one, and I think that we ended up going back and getting another couple more, and of course, over the Christmas vacation, people were, it was Christmas time, that there were people, family or neighbors or whatever, that were saying, "Jeez, I sure would like to get one. How do I get one?". So mark me down for two more.
I got you. It's, it's been a fun ride, and really, the most fun part of it is seeing all the posts on Facebook of families with, taking pictures of their kids playing on a game that we created. So we're very proud of it and hope that as a community, this will go down as a really great piece that we've created.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to be, Holly asked me to come down for, what, two and a half hours first night and see if anybody wanted their game signed. Well, that ended up being a much bigger thing than we thought it was going to be. I don't know what that was worth, but they certainly, they certainly went for the idea of me signing, that once we figured out I had to take the plastic or the paper off, so it would, my signature would be on the box, not on the paper.
Well, I got to tell you, Mayor, I mean, that is a big thing, because the people that I'm getting these gifts for, they want it signed by the mayor also, so I'll be, I'll be knocking on your door.
Yeah. I've had them over at my house ringing my doorbell with the game. So it's following me around wherever I go. So it's a, I mean, I, you know, not to labor this, but Lighthouse really does deserve for Alderman Salvati, I shouldn't, Mr. Salvati while he's with Lighthouse, really did a, really a nice job with this thing. And I mean, the compliments I've gotten since people started playing it and understanding it, and all the Batavia things that are inside of it, as one told me, is really something very special. So I appreciate what you did there, because it was, it was a master stroke, and it's one of those legacies that I think 50 years from now, somebody will be wanting this left in their will to somebody, or, you know, there'll be a prized Batavia historical piece that people are going to be wanting to hold on to. So thanks to both, both of you involved in it. It really turned out to be a wondrous thing.
Holly, can you explain to people what the markers are so that there's not controversy on Facebook again?
The what?
The...
Oh, yes. So the playing pieces, we, some people, one criticism is that there's no windmill playing piece, so you can't select a windmill. We had, and happy to explain this whole process, but there is a lot of people that were involved in this, and not just Scott and I, many people on a committee, but how this was able to be done was sponsorship by local businesses. So the businesses that are, the properties that are around the board came up with some sponsorship dollars for us to be able to create this and put their logo on these game pieces, on the, on the board. In addition to that, we had some upsided sponsorships as well, that they could buy a game piece. So somebody asked today why there was a Christmas tree and not a windmill. That's not a Christmas tree. That's Bruce the Spruce, the mascot for the Batavia Park District. Of course, Mayor Schelke needed to be a piece. I would have paid for that one. But those, it just came down to what people were willing to do. Somebody came up with a great idea that, you know, a couple years from now, we'll do an expansion set where we sell some additional, some additional playing pieces, which may be something that we do in the future. So if anybody's looking to sponsor a windmill, you just let me know.
And Holly?
Yes.
For those of us that got the game that don't have the loving pictures, I would like to thank you for the true Monopoly tradition of yelling and screaming.
Yes. So, well, please enjoy. I hope that we will able to get one of these games in everybody's hands. Like I said, the quantities are limited. Without further ado, we're always loving to support our local businesses, and today we have a few representatives, they were fighting back their tooth and nail on who was going to be able to have the opportunity to come up here to speak today, I'm telling you. But I think they landed on Amir and Ashley will be coming up there, part of the new ownership and management team over at the Aliano's in Batavia.
Welcome.
Happy New Year, everyone. Well, thank you for inviting us over here in your Batavia community. Just want to let you know that if everyone is aware of the Aliano Express and the Aliano's Restaurant is now under new ownership, where we come up with the new menus and better service, high-quality food, and with more improvement. And do you want to share some words over there?
We are delivering again, and to about a 15 to 20 mile radius, so...
That is, yeah, we are delivering, and we are also offering a catering at the private parties.
As well as being open for lunch.
Yes.
Can you share with us your opening hours, or any days you closed, and what's your phone number? So, because this is on TV, so people will be watching.
Oh, sure. We are open for the lunch. We are usually open at 11:30 a.m. till 9:00 during weekdays, Monday to Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we open 11:30 till 10:00. And our phone number is 630-406-9400.
Website is www.alianosbatavia.com.
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
I just got to share that I enjoy going to Aliano's. I've been a patron of theirs, I guess, since the day they opened, and Ashley was there on that very first day, so I've gotten to know Ashley a little bit, and Amir has been just a pleasure to get to know. I've gone over there quite often now again since they've taken over ownership. The food is fabulous, the service is, you know, excellent. You can't complain about either one, the food or the service. And I'll tell you that if you order some pizzas, they do deliver, and you might be fortunate enough to have the owner who's standing right here in front of you show up at your doorstep with the pizzas, as I did about a week ago.
Exactly. Definitely make sure, like, everything goes on the right way.
That's right. So, high compliments of them.
Over the weekend, I had, ran into some, some visitors who are working out at Fermilab at the moment, and so it was told to them who I was, and they mentioned this particular restaurant is one of their favorite places to go to eat, and they have to eat out almost every night, they tell me, and they like to go to Aliano's, and your new menu and everything got rave reviews, so I think... is one of their favorite places to go to eat. And they have to eat out almost every night, they tell me. And they like to go to Aliano's. And your new menu and everything got rave reviews. So I think, oh, you're playing well out at Fermilab.
We are working hard, yes.
So congratulations. And we welcome you to our community and wish you many years of business growth and success.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, just wanted to chime in a second with Dave said. My family, we showed up on Christmas Eve for the lunch. My daughter, Ashley, enjoyed meeting Ashley. And we came with a party of about 10 people for a lunchtime. And the food was, as Dave said, terrific. Your prime rib, the end cut, nice. I thoroughly enjoyed that. So, but really, hats off. It's really very enjoyable to be back in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onward and upward. We look forward to seeing you around quite a bit. So thank you for choosing Batavia to set up business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure to do it. Thank you.
Okay, now we go to the administrators' report.
Okay, just have a few items to share. On January 1st, we received notice that Fire Marshal Rick Rubo announced that he is planning to retire on January 5th. And Fire Marshal Rubo has been a firefighter with the Batavia Fire Department for a very long time. He started with the department in 1978 as a paid-on-call firefighter. So we're really going to miss him. We're going to have a little retirement party for him this coming Friday. In Public Works, the project to completely replace the electronic controls at the McKee Substation has been completed. It's a project that was similar in scope to the work that we completed earlier in 2017 for the downtown main substation. That pole, the damaged power pole, concrete power pole that was at the northwest corner of Redant and Wilson, has been replaced. And we are working with the police department to identify the driver who hit the pole. And we are also doing the planning on analyzing the structural integrity of the remaining concrete poles that we have. Engineering has developed some high-level spending projections on how to use the bond funds for the stormwater improvements. And a lack of snow prior to Christmas allowed our streets crews to get an early start on the winter tree pruning that we do, and also storm sewer catch basin cleaning. And we'll be able to continue those activities weather permitting. Unfortunately, since then, weather hasn't permitted. In community and economic development, we have an opening in the administrative assistant position in the community development department. And this coming week, we'll be interviewing some internal candidates for that position. Also, the Tomley Building, we have engaged the individual to the commercial broker. And we actually have a showing scheduled for tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock for that building. Chris Cudworth has been working with the organizers of the event called Host to Present, which is the 60-year commemoration of the Saturday evening post cover featuring the skaters on the Batavia Pond. Chris has done an excellent job of reaching out to the local news media so that they can be present and share in this event. I think it's a great opportunity for some good publicity for what makes this community so special. In information systems, they completed the cabling project out at Public Works. NetSource, the contractor, did a really great job of organizing what were, you know, years' worth of wires here and there. But for the techies, we're now able to run Ted, 10 gigabytes of speed to our desktops at Public Works, which will greatly improve the efficiency because the programs that they're running out there in the engineering department, in the electric department, in the water department, require a lot of bandwidth in order to operate at most efficient speed possible. And that was just a huge improvement. So we were very happy to complete that. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions from the council? Alderman Brown?
What's the latest on the Cackert property?
So, following the meeting that Mr. Cackert had with city council, I believe that we are still awaiting him filing his formal application. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, we have not received a formal application from him yet. So we anticipate that'll be coming in the coming weeks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have had several conversations with Laura in the last few days about the Tomley property. And I will share with you that I have some concerns about us just putting this thing on the market and just selling it to anybody that comes along. I guess I would be of the opinion that we should kind of try to redesign this deal a little bit so that, number one, we sell it to somebody who seriously wants to do something with the property and not just let it sit there vacant for another five or 10 years. And secondly, that we sell it to somebody that we know what it is they're going to do with the property. You know, and I realize that puts the broker that we're hiring in a little bit of a constraint. But on the same token, I just don't think, given what I sense is the sentiments of support that this council has for the downtown, that we want to just throw this thing to the birds and let it kind of languish there without anybody knowing what's going to go on there. I just worry that we're going to get ourselves into another long-term do-nothing moment here, and we're not going to get anything done with this property. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, if we had somebody that wanted to come in and buy it and put an addition onto the back, you could put a dining room back there that would be a dynamite restaurant right on the Fox River, right by the bridge. The views coming off there are pretty good. And I think it could be a real spark plug for downtown Batavia if that property is treated the right way. But I've had some folks come in here and chat with me, and as near as I can ascertain, most of them just want to buy it with under speculation and wait four or five years and see what happens down the road. And I'm not necessarily, you know, maybe that's what it has to be. But I guess I'd rather see the city in command of waiting to see what's going to go on. This is a public body. If people don't like what we're doing, we all can be voted out of office, or we'll all leave office, and still the city would be in command of what's going on here. But if you look at spots in this community that have some significance or some impacting ability, I would suggest to you that that property at that location is one that really does have an impact on the community, both today and in the future. And there is a lot of history associated with the building. I think if the right thing done there, that could be a real popular place. And so I just hate to see us kind of loosey-goosey this thing down the road and let nobody just come in and say, "Okay, here's my offer," and we take it, and then it just sits there for a long time to come. That's my fear.
I agree.
So I don't know if we want to take this back to another committee meeting and kick it around, or whether you want to just go forward and let somebody come in and buy it?
Well, I think, Mayor, I don't know if we need to take it back to another committee meeting. I think staff, meaning Laura, has probably just heard what your feeling is on this. And I don't know as if we need to take a vote on it or not. But I kind of get the census from the conversations we've had at the committee meeting that that would be the way the council would generally feel. And I think that Laura going out of here with that type of understanding would be sufficient.
It sounds to me as though that type of arrangement would be more amenable with requests for proposals that then we would present to you as, you know, possibilities for, rather than go through the broker. So I think what I would recommend is to have, we'll have a conversation with the broker to see. He probably, with the added restrictions on it, that may be a reason why he might not be interested in continuing to market the property for us. And I'll give you an update on that in next week's meeting.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that at the moment?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the mayor made a very good point. And I would support that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I guess I kind of figured all along that something would come back, and we obviously can choose who we sell to. So I just kind of figured that we would take it with some scrutiny, whatever was going to come back. If somebody came back and said, "Yeah, I'm going to tear it down and put up a glass-and-steel structure there," I think we would all say, "Well, no, that's not, not what we want," even though that is out there as the possibility of somebody tearing it down. I figured that we were all going to talk about this, depending on what came back.
Well, you know, we're in control now. And I just would like to see us retain some type of control so that we know what's happening there on a moment by moment till we finally get to that point. I just shudder at the thought of turning this over, selling it to somebody out the door, and away it goes. And then it just sits there for, we have no control over it for a while, forever again.
Yeah, I suggest we let Laura come back to us at a committee meeting and give her a recommendation. I agree with you, Mark. I think that's the way we all kind of understood it, that we would scrutinize any offer that came to us. But maybe the more, the better way to do it would be to do a request for proposal. So let's let Laura do her thing with staff and come back to us with some more recommendations on it.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anybody else on that one?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, going to committee reports, committee of development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan commission for tomorrow evening has been canceled. Historic preservation is scheduled for next Monday, the 8th, at 5:30. And the next committee, the whole meeting, will be next Tuesday, January 9th. Quite a few things on the agenda for the committee, for the community development area of it. We do have a public hearing for 920 Main Street, 209 Whipple Avenue, and 215 Whipple Avenue. And then we have an ordinance of 18-06 for annexation agreement between Jed P. Thelk and Jay Nelson. And then we have an ordinance, 18-07, annexation agreement between Natia Lee Folgus and Kevin Priest. We also have an ordinance, 18-10, for annexing and zoning property at 920 Main Street to the city. Ordinance 18-11 for annexing and zoning property at 209 Whipple Avenue to the city. Ordinance 18-08, authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between Leslie Huddleston and the city. And then ordinance 18-12, annexing and zoning property at 215 Whipple Avenue to the city. That's all I have for my report.
Okay. Government services, Alderman Atech?
Yes, on the Cow on January 9th, we have a resolution 18-02-r, authorizing the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Housing Authority of the City of Aurora, and also discussion of the city hall main staircase.
Okay. City services, Alderman Wolf?
That was mine, the city hall main street.
Sorry, I apologize.
The city service. It's okay.
Soon as I said it.
We'll have a good discussion about it.
Public utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
All right. Do we have other business from the council, Alderman Chance?
I just want to say thank you for your remarks on Bob Gerard. I had the pleasure of having him as my photographer for probably 100 assignments during my work at the Chronicle. And I can tell you that his love for this community and his wealth of knowledge and whatnot would certainly rival your knowledge of Batavia history. I can tell you that he covered tragedies like the accident on McKee Street. He covered graduations. He covered all kinds of community events. And the fact that he could blend in, nobody knew that he was there. And he would come to news meetings at 4 o'clock with some of the most beautiful photography. And I'm just so happy I had the pleasure to work with him. Thanks for your remarks.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else, Alderman Brown?
Your Honor, thank you. At the last meeting, we were a little bit concerned about whether or not we were going to have ice. Well, let me tell you, we do have ice. The committee met today to discuss this. We set the meeting up intentionally today so that we would, I would have the opportunity to tell you whether or not we were going to hold the event. The event will be held. Forecast is for cold weather to continue between now and then and even beyond. So the event will kind of go like this. I'll just hit some of the high points of this. It's going to go between the hours of 12 and 4 p.m. on Saturday. There's going to be music. There's going to be things set up on the ice, possibly some hockey nets. There's been some conversation. Bob Hanson from Funway is kind of in charge of how he's going to handle all the, whether or not we're going to have any types of games out there on the ice, or skating in circles, or what have you. He's going to kind of wing it based on how many people are here. But that's going to all go between 12 and 4. We intend on trying to get everyone on the ice that's in attendance at 1 o'clock. I understand the fire department's going to bring down one of their trucks, and they're going to lift the press up. I understand Mark Foster is going to be here. So he'll probably have the opportunity to get up in there and take some pictures to put in the newspaper. Sounds like Chris has got some other local media and even Channel 2 News possibly on the hook for coming out here and doing some media events on this. So that, we're going to try to get done between 1 and 1:30. So if anybody's interested in coming down and getting in on all this, that would be the time that we're going to try to get all that done. The rest of the time, between noon and 1, and between 1:30 and 4, is just going to be open skating. Let's have some fun and good old time. The Women's Club of Batavia will be providing hot chocolate. And they will be doing that without selling it, but they'll be taking donations for the hot chocolate that you would like to get. And any of the proceeds that the Women's Club gets will be used, will be donated to the Batavia Historical Expansion Project. And then also, the Historical Society will be there, and they will be selling packets of marshmallows and chocolate, which you can make s'mores with. And again, any of the proceeds from that will be going towards the expansion of the Historical Society building also, or the museum also. There will be Bernie's Dogs, who's been very popular around town. They're going to be there, and he's going to be selling hot dogs, soup, and cider. So there's going to be plenty of things to keep you warmed up and fed. And then Gusterson School of Third Grade Art Students will also be in attendance. And they have done a real nice art collaboration for the event, where they're going to have some art exhibits that they're going to put up of the way they saw what happened 60 years ago and what they envisioned happening on that day, from what I understand. So that will be either at the Peg Bon Center or at the museum itself. That's going to, we're going to see how things fit in place when we get there to set everything all up on Saturday morning. But the museum will be open for viewing of everything that's in the museum. And it will also be open for warming, as well as the Peg Bon Center that will be opened up also for warming. And that's where you'll be able to buy your hot chocolate and such. There's also going to be some fire pits. Obviously, we need fire pits in order to make s'mores. So those are going to be per our city ordinance in the controlled burners. We're going to have seven or eight of them kind of around the pond area where you can stand and warm up or cook your s'mores. And it's going to be a real nice event. Bob's done a real nice job of organizing this. And it's going to be a real nice event. It's going to be a little chilly, but I guess you've got to have chili in order to have ice. So we'll see how it goes. But we're hopefully going to get everybody down there by 1 o'clock. And I don't know, Chris, do you have anything else you want to add to this?
Um, that's pretty good. I mean, I'm still nudging us a bit towards this idea of maybe trying to recreate a little bit of the scene, but we'll see how that functions with everything that's going on. I'm going to talk to Bob a little bit more tomorrow, and see where we are on that.
Okay, very good.
I mean, I would concur with that. I think that would be the fun moment, if we can get people in somewhat the same costumes that that picture has and just take a quick shot. Because the fire department's bringing the ladder truck with the bucket. So it's going to be easy for photographers to get up and take some quick shots of it. But it would be fun to be able to take pictures and know who those people really are in the new picture that we would take.
Well, we're all for it. We discussed it at the committee, trying to recreate. And we just really kind of thought it might be awful hard to try to get people out there at a certain time, in a certain place. So we're all for trying it.
If we got enough volunteer actors around, we could probably do it. We just need to get that guy in that big colorful sweater that weighs about 350 pounds. We need to get him out there in the middle because he was identified specifically in the Falter painting.
Sammy Sam's husband seems to be pretty good at some of those roles. They do have to...
Yeah, whatever.
Sorry.
So we do have ice. Eric Lackner said today at our meeting that we've got about eight inches of ice. He's got quite a bit of it cleared off now. The green flag is flying as of today, and there were people on the ice skating today. And he's going to clear, the park district is going to clear off another area tomorrow, a little bit north of what's cleared right now, which is where they'll, they're trying to set it up out there where one area is set up for just open skating and the other area is where you can play hockey. So it's open to the public right now.
Dave, is there anywhere somebody who just missed hearing any of that can go? Is there a website or?
It's been all over social media, from what I understand. And there's posters that are all over town at all the different stores. I don't know if there's anyplace else, Laura?
It's on our Facebook page. There is a poster that has been made by Lighthouse Productions. Gives all the information about the event.
Okay. Okay.
Newspaper, tomorrow, Wednesday Daily Herald.
Wednesday Daily Herald will also have it.
Please come up and use the mic.
Is that the Sammy Kings?
I believe so.
Okay.
Under the mayor's report, I just got a couple of things to announce. Number one, at our next city council meeting, come early if you want a parking space, because the Batavia High School State Championship Football Team is coming en masse, and we're going to be presenting to them a city certificate that we've been making upstairs, with putting each one of their names on it. And one of us here is, knows the names of all these players, and how to pronounce those names. And so that alderman is going to be put into a position to be kind of leader of this whole thing, and he's going to read off the names, and we're going to present, but there's 140 certificates to present, so, and I'm sure some folks are going to bring mom and dad, and grandpa and grandma, and brother and sisters, and whatever. So it's going to be quite a crowd here for a little bit. We'll put it right at the very beginning of the agenda, so everybody else can, you know, come in, get their certificate, and kind of get out the door, and we can then get on with business. But the opening of the meeting is going to be a pretty intensified thing, with Alderman Wolf hopefully rolling through those names and getting them all. I'm sure you can do it.
Yep.
No problem whatsoever. I'd be petrified trying to do it, I'd be mispronouncing half of them. So, that, we wanted to make sure we, we get. The other thing is, is we've got some interesting issues kind of begging out in the community, and I've been getting calls from people complaining about certain things. And one of the things that's, a new complaint is, apparently we've got a couple residents in town who think they figured out a way how to beat our parking-on-the-street ordinance. And what they do is, is that they pull in their driveway, and they park their car across the driveway, not on it, so that they can park an extra car in the driveway. And it's kind of causing the staff a little bit of a dilemma issue as to, should we be writing a ticket to somebody who is on the street side of the sidewalk, because they are technically in the parkway? And we've had people calling up with some regularity, at least to me, complaining about this. So I don't want to talk about it tonight, but once we get it together, talk with the police and code enforcement, I think we'll have to have some conversation about if we're going to allow people to park in their driveway in the parkway. And, because we don't now currently allow people to be parking on the parkway. And needless to say, when somebody tries it, it's, becomes a quick conversation piece in the neighborhood. And it's not immune to any one ward, to all of you, I think it may have somebody trying to do that right now. So, when somebody sees somebody else doing it, then, and they've, if they've been, specifically if they've been told they can't, then it's time to call the mayor, because somebody else is doing it and getting away with it, and I'm not. And so, and I hate to put the city staff in the, because we don't, you know, trying to enforce the ordinance, but there's somebody that's got a new idea on how to try to do it, and turning their car a different direction, seems to be. I've been told about it, so I've even gone, late at night, and gone out and looked at these people, how they're parking their cars. So it is an interesting situation. Also, I want to tell you that you've probably have gathered that we've got a couple people who I guess I would describe as homeless, who are kind of around town, and we're trying to get our arms around that to find out exactly what's going on there. It, it's a fairly complex issue, because in some instances, they're, they're discharged from some institution someplace, and they don't have any place to go, and whatever have you. So there's some issues, so we may want to talk about that at some future meeting, too. Again, I, I want to tell you, I think the Batavia Police Department has done a real nice job with the situations we've had to deal with. We've got one that I think has been sleeping down in the, in the hall here, not in the hall, but in front of the police window down there on the benches that we have. And so, and then we have some that want to bring in all their goods and fill up the bus station up at the corner of Batavia Avenue and Wilson, and that gets a lot of conversation by a lot of people. And I've had people call me, and want to go give the people money, and where can they, where can we move them to, and, you know, we're not in the homeless business here. And it's, it's a difficult situation to deal with, but it's probably a result of, you know, things that have happened at higher levels of government, that things have been changed, and funding's been cut, and whatever have you, and a bunch of people have been put out on the street. So, I find out in talking to my peers throughout the region, that we're not alone in this, that this is a very common thing that's happening in many cities, that everybody seems to get one or two people that want to make themselves residents of a, of a town that they've never lived, never been in before. But if their perceptions are that it's safe, and they can find someplace to go, and, you know, between the Batavia Library, McDonald's, and the lobby outside the PlayStation, you can probably find someplace warm to go for most of the day in Batavia. But the library has been another very open heart on this thing, and it's been very helpful with these folks, and trying to help facilitate what's going on here. But it's, it's a really, without getting into detail, it's a really a difficult issue to deal with, because, and the police have done on my yeoman's chore in trying to deal with this, but it's not an easy one to wrap our arms around. So I wanted you to know, if you get any questions about that, that we are aware of it, we've been trying to, especially with this cold weather we got, we have not, you know, let anybody be out there in the cold. They've been allowed at least to come into the building here and spend the night, and whatever, and so we'll see how that all flushes out as we go forward here. But it's something we do have, I think we are in control of it, and we are trying to do everything we can to help, help in the best we can. So no further business, Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Second. Motion and second. Kirk, take a voice vote.
Call in favor.
Aye.